My name is William Lutz, President of Council. I will lead us in the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand up. Please bow our heads. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this beautiful day. Thank you for this beautiful weekend that we had of fun and fellowship throughout our community. We ask your blessings on those folks that protect us each and every day with our safety services, and we also ask your blessings on those men and women and individuals that serve us each and every day, trying to make this community the very best community it can be. Lord be with this council tonight, and let us never lose focus of the least and the last and the lost among us. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I'll ask Mrs. Knight to please call the roll.
Mr. Whitten?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mrs. Snee?
Here.
Mr. Rozell?
Here.
Mr. Phillips? Mr. Schilling?
Present.
Mr. Pierce?
Here.
Mr. Seaver?
Here.
Mrs. Marshall?
Moved to excuse Mr. Phillips. Second.
It's been moved to excuse Mr. Phillips by Mr. Seaver, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips is excused.
Moved to excuse Mrs. Marshall.
Second.
It's been moved to excuse Mrs. Marshall by Mr. Seaver, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall is excused.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, would you please read a summary of the minutes of the May 16, 2022, meeting of Troy City Council?
Minutes of Council, May 16, 2022. Committee reports, the Buildings and Utilities Committee recommended legislation be prepared, authorizing bidding for the water treatment plant filter media cleaning project. Community and Economic Development Committee recommended ordinance number 016, 2022, a rezoning be approved, and ordinance number 017, 2022, a rezoning be approved. Community Partnership Committee recommended legislation be prepared, approving Troy Truck Yard Event on June 22. Law and Ordinance Committee reported regarding notice of two liquor permit applications. Streets and Sidewalks Committee recommended legislation be prepared, authorizing bidding for the sidewalk improvement program, that the West Main Street Project Improvement Project Phase Two have easements authorized to be executed. Resolution Number R40, 2022, Contract Phase 14 Sidewalk Program, First Reading. Resolution R41, 2022, Contract for the Water Plant Filter Media Cleaning Project was given first reading and was adopted. Ordinance 016, 2022, Rezoning of Inlots 11465, 11466 was given third reading and adopted. Ordinance 017, 2022, Zoning of Inlot 11400 and 11401 was given third reading and adopted. Ordinance 026, 2022, Accepting Easements for West Main Street Project was given first reading and was adopted. Ordinance Number 027, 2022, Authorizing Use of Public Areas for the Truck Yard Event was given first reading and adopted. Following comments, Council adjourned at 7:34.
Has Council wished to dispose of the minutes?
Moved to approve.
Second.
It's been moved to approve. The minutes by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Moving on to committee reports. We have eight reports tonight. We'll begin with the first three reports with the Buildings and Utilities Committee, and standing in for Mrs. Marshall, Mr. Twist.
Thank you. On May 23, committee members Twist and Marshall met to consider authorizing bidding for the City Hall HVAC Upgrade Project. This equipment has exceeded the life design and maintenance costs are increasing with parts becoming difficult to obtain. The current estimate of $430,000 exceeds the budgeted amount of $350,000. Funds are available within the fund balances wherein the project is allocated. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the City Hall HVAC Upgrade Project at a total cost not to exceed $430,000. That's respectfully submitted by William Twist, Jeffrey Whitten, and Kristi Marshall as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Twist. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, will you please move on to your second report?
On May 23, the committee members met, Twist and Marshall, to consider a request to increase the authorization for the Hobart Arena Roof Replacement Project. Bids were opened May 18 and exceeded the $670,000 authorization. Based on the roof condition and the need to not impact the Hobart Arena operations, an authorization of $800,000 was requested. This would allow a contract to be awarded to the lowest bidder. It is the recommendation of the committee that legislation be prepared, increasing the authorization for the Hobart Arena Roof Replacement Project to $800,000. So that a contract can be awarded without delay, this committee supports emergency legislation. That's respectfully submitted by William Twist, Jeffrey Whitten, and Kristi Marshall as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Twist. Are there any final comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Community and Economic Development Committee with three reports this evening, and Mr. Schilling.
Thank you. On May 23, committee members Snee and Schilling met to review a request to vacate and accept utility easements within the Legacy Meadows Subdivision. A proposed replat will combine parts of Inlot 8205 and Inlots 10290 and 10291 into a new single lot. This will require the vacation of the interior utility easements and the acceptance of the new utility easement along the proposed rear property lines. Council action is required for the vacation and acceptance of easements. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, approving the replat of part of Inlot 8205 and Inlots 10290 and 10291, and the acceptance of the utility easements therein, and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute any documents related to the easements. This committee supports emergency legislation to not delay the recording of the plat and any property closings. This was respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce and Mrs. Snee and myself, Jeff Schilling as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, please move on.
Okay, thank you. On May 23, committee members Snee and Schilling met to review a request to accept utility easements for two new lots being created as part of the replat of Park Inlot 8267 located off Livingston Drive. Council action is required for the acceptance of easements. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, approving the replat of part of Inlot 8267, and the acceptance of the utility easements therein, and authorizing Director of Public Service and Safety to execute any documents related to the easements. This committee supports emergency legislation to not delay recording of the plat and any property closings. Again, respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself, Jeff Schilling as Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Any comments or questions on this item? Mr. Schilling, please go ahead.
Thank you. On May 23, committee members Snee and Schilling met to review the applications for 2022 Plan Year Community Development Block Grant CB-- I'm sorry, CDBG funding for qualifying projects in 2023. It is the recommendation of this committee that the legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to submit applications to the Ohio Department of Development, ODD, for $150,000 of Plan Year 2022 CDBG Community Allocation Program Funds for the project stated in a detailed report. The committee supports emergency legislation based on the ODD June 15 application date. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself, Jeff Schilling as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Community Partnerships Committee, and Mr. Rozell.
Thank you. On May 23, this committee met to consider authorizing the city to participate in the Program Year 2022 CHIP Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program Partnership Agreement with Miami County and Pickle. This is a grant application program for qualifying LMI extensive home rehabilitation and smaller home repair projects. Only by being a party to the partnership agreement can rehabilitation or repair projects in Troy be included for any CHIP funds awarded. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy to enter into the Program Year 2022 CHIP Program Partnership Agreement between the Miami County Board of Commissioners, the City of Pickle, Ohio, and the City of Troy, Ohio. As the county must finalize and file the application by June 22, the committee supports emergency legislation. This is respectfully submitted by Jeff-- Jeffrey Schilling, Todd Seaver, and myself, William Rozell as Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rozell. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Finance Committee, and Mr. Seaver.
Thank you, Mr. President. On May 23, this committee met to consider authorizing a loan application to fund the net cost of the wastewater treatment plant blower replacement and treatment capacity upgrade project. The total cost of this project, including design fees, is estimated at $16,100,000. Grant applications have been submitted but have not yet been determined. To fund the project costs net of any grants, the city plans to submit a loan application for a term of 20 to 30 years with a 0.65% interest rate. The loan application has to be submitted, no less than 60 days prior to the project bid opening. Wherefore, it is recommend-- it is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to submit an application to the Ohio EPA DFA Office of Financial Assistance to request a construction loan up to $16,100,000 for the wastewater treatment plant blower replacement and treatment capacity upgrade project, and to execute any necessary documents if the application is approved. The committee supports emergency legislation so that the application can be submitted without delay once the amount and timing are determined. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Phillips, Mr. Rozell, and myself as Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Seaver. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, we'll go to our last committee report for the evening with the Recreation and Parks Committee, with Mr. Whitten.
Mr. President, on May 23, committee members Rozell and Schilling met to consider a request to increase authorization for the equipment shed structure of Miami Shores Golf Course. This project will be reduced in scope in anticipation of receiving bids. Based on the current bidding climate, an increase in authorization from $100,000 to $112,000 was requested. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, increasing the authorization for the Miami County-- the Miami Shores Golf Course Equipment Shed Structure at a cost not to exceed $112,000. This was respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Schilling, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Whitten. Are there any final comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we open it up for public comments on items on the agenda. We have seven resolutions and four ordinances for discussion tonight. If you wish to address counsel on any of those ordinances or resolutions, you're invited to come to the podium, give your name and address, and you have two minutes to address counsel. Seeing none, we'll move on to resolutions. I'll ask Mrs. Knight to read the first resolution of the evening, Resolution R40, 2022.
Resolution Number R40, 2022. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for Phase 14 of the Sidewalk Repair Program, cost not to exceed $300,000. This is the second reading.
We've asked for this to be held over for a third reading. We will discuss this at our next meeting. Mrs. Knight, would you please read the next resolution, Resolution R42, 2022.
Resolution Number R42, 2022. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the City Hall HVAC Replacement Project, total cost not to exceed $430,000, first reading.
Has Counsel wished to act?
Moved to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Moved to approve.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Twist. Are there any final comments or questions? Seeing none, Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, would you please read the next resolution for the evening, Resolution R43, 2022.
Resolution Number R43, 2022. Resolution amending, Resolution Number R10, 2022, authorizing the Recreation Board of the City of Troy, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the Hobart Arena Roof Replacement Project and declaring an emergency. This would be at a cost not to exceed $800,000, first reading.
Moved to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Seaver, I believe. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Moved to adopt. Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Just get the call.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
That was some last-minute lobbying. Yes. Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, would you please read the next resolution for the evening, Resolution R44, 2022.
Resolution Number R44, 2022. Resolution amending, Resolution Number R31, 2021, authorizing the Board of Park Commissioners of the City of Troy, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for an equipment shed structure for the Miami Shores Golf Course, cost not to exceed $112,000, first reading.
Moved to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Whitten. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, would you please read the next resolution for the evening, Resolution R45, 2022.
Resolution Number R45, 2022. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to file an application for the use of PY 2022 Community Development Block Grant Funds and declaring an emergency. This would approve the amount expenditure, $17,000 for program administration, $3,000 for the fair housing, $75,000 for a program at the project at the Troy Rec, and $55,000 for project, the Senior Citizens Center, and this is the first reading.
Moved to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Moved to adopt. Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Are there any final comments or questions?
I'm sorry, I did not give him the second.
Mr. Pierce.
Thank you.
Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, would you please read the next resolution for the evening, Resolution R46, 2022.
Resolution Number R46, 2022. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into the PY 2022 CHIP Program Partnership Agreement by and between the Miami County Board of Commissioners, the City of Pickle, Ohio, and the City of Troy, Ohio, for the Ohio Department of Development, ODD, Community Housing Impact Preservation CHIP Program and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Moved to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Moved to adopt. Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Are there any final comments or questions? Seeing none, Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, would you please read the last resolution for the evening, Resolution R47, 2022.
Resolution Number R47, 2022. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to apply for, accept, and enter into a Water Pollution Control Loan Fund, WPCLF, agreement on behalf of the City of Troy, Ohio, for the planning, design, and/or construction of wastewater facilities, and designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan, and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading, and this was reported on this evening.
Moved to suspend. Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Whitten. Are there any final comments or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll, Mrs. Knight.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Moving on to ordinances, Mrs. Knight, would you please read the first ordinance of the evening, Ordinance 028, 2022.
Ordinance Number 028, 2022. Ordinance approving replat of part of Inlot 8267 and the acceptance of utility easements in the City of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Moved to suspend. Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Are there any final comments or questions? Seeing none, Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Will you please read the next ordinance of the evening? Ordinance O. 29, 2022.
Ordinance number O. 29, 2022. Ordinance approving replat of part of in lot 8205 and in lots 10290 and 10291 in the Legacy Meadows subdivision and accepting and dedicating utility easements in the City of Troy, Ohio and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second. It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next ordinance for the evening? Ordinance O. 30, 2022.
Ordinance number O. 30, 2022. Ordinance amending ordinance number O. 65, 2021, appropriating funds necessary for the various departments and offices of the City of Troy, Ohio for the year 2022. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second. It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mrs. Snee, seconded by Mr. Schilling. The three reading rule has been suspended. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the last ordinance of the evening? Ordinance O. 31, 2022.
Ordinance number O. 31, 2022. An ordinance changing the zoning of parcel number DO-8250712 and DO-8250710 in the City of Troy, Ohio from R. 6, two-family residential district to OR-1, office residential district. This is located at 408 and 410 North Elm Street. There will be a public hearing at the next meeting. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. In consideration of the public hearing at the next meeting, this will be held over for a second reading at our next meeting. Moving on to communications and announcements, Mrs. Knight, do we have any this evening?
No, sir.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to invite Mrs. Nikki Schirck to the podium. Mrs. Schirck is the Executive Director of CASA-GAL here in Miami County for a brief presentation.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I just wanted to share a little bit about what we do and how we're impacting our community here in Miami County. CASA-GAL was founded in 1994 and has been serving kids here in our community since then. When the court steps in because of abuse or neglect, so Children's Services is involved first, and then they file a complaint with the court saying that the court needs to be involved in this case, then we are automatically appointed to those cases. So every child here in Miami County that has an abuse or neglect case before the court is appointed a CASA volunteer. So these volunteers are community citizens who are willing to give their time and energy to advocating for kids who are in our system. They go through pretty rigorous training. We have a 30-hour pre-service training that they start with, and then each year they must do an additional 12 hours of continuing ed in order to remain a CASA volunteer. But they get to know that child. They interview their parents, any caregivers, doctors, therapists, anybody that's involved in that child's life, and then make recommendations to the court on what's in the best interest for that child. In the 80s, the CASA program was founded in the state of Washington where there was a judge saying, "There are lots of lawyers in my courtroom representing everyone in this room except for a child," and the child didn't have anyone speaking for them. So he said, "Let's see if we can get some volunteers who would be that voice for the child." And so that's where the program started, and we are just one of about 1,000 programs in the United States that do this. In many counties, if there's not a CASA program, then attorney GALS are appointed to the case. But kind of the nuance of a CASA program is that we have dedicated volunteers who have the time and energy to devote, so they get to know the child well. They can't, they visit with them every month. That's a requirement of our program, that they see the child every month for the life of the case. That way, they get to know them, they really know what their needs are, we can make recommendations, everything from where they should live and who they should live with to what kind of services they need. If we notice a developmental delay, clearly, we're not experts, but we can recommend that there be an assessment to see if there are needs in that area. The same with educational assessments, and we can even recommend things like extracurricular activities. We know that mentoring and one caring adult often makes a big difference in the life of a child who's experienced trauma. So we have about 50 volunteers here in Miami County who serve. We have some, we have two volunteers who have been with us 24 years, which is amazing, and have served, you know, innumerable children in that period of time. This last year, we served 198 children here in Miami County, which is the highest number in our history. That is a little tricky for us because we have to have enough volunteers standing ready when a case comes to court, but we have no control over how many go to court. So we try and train enough volunteers to make sure that when we get a case, that, you know, we have a volunteer available to take it. Occasionally, our staff members will take one if there isn't one, but for the most part, we are able to meet them all with volunteers. And as I said, that number just keeps increasing in our community. And, you know, there was a slight slowdown because of COVID. People weren't seeing these children. Mandated reporters, you know, couldn't report abuse that they were seeing because they weren't in school, they weren't, you know, being seen by pastors in churches, those kinds of things. Those are the people in our community who are mandated reporters. And so that number did tick down slightly in the early months of COVID, but has definitely ticked back up since then. So at this year, at this point, we have already served 167 children this year. We started with 130 at the beginning of the year. So some of our cases end in two or three months, some of them go as long as nine years. So we ask a CASA volunteer to make a commitment to a child and to a case, however long that case is. We ask them for a minimum of two years because that's the average life cycle for a case. But like I said, there are some cases, if a child, you know, is in foster care and has chosen not to be adopted, there are some older kids that say, "I don't want to break those familial ties. It's not safe for me to go home, but I still don't, I still want to have connection with maybe grandparents or aunts or uncles." And so they age out of foster care. So we remain with those cases for the length of those cases in our community. Any questions? Yeah.
Well, if anybody wanted to volunteer, how would they, how would they contact you?
The best way is to go to our website, miam county casa.org. All of the information about what's required of a volunteer is there. You have to be a minimum of 21 years old. You do have to submit to a background check. We want to make sure that everybody who's working with kids is safe, obviously. But there's lots of great information, and our application is online as well, so they can fill out an application there online. And then we do an interview process before starting the training. We try to do the training three times a year. We are just finishing up pre-service training, so we'll have a couple that'll be sworn in in a couple weeks. So this fall will be the next time that we're offering the new training.
Do council members have any other questions? Well, thank you so much for your time. We really appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
Good luck to you and your organization. Thank you, Nikki. This time, we'll go on to comments and officials. Mayor Odom.
I was still thinking about everything Nikki said. Caught me off guard. I just want to say thank you to the Troy Strawberry Festival Committee and Board for an amazing weekend. They worked their tails off. It was an amazing weekend for everybody. And also to our city staff, utilities, workers, trash and recycling, water, electric departments, everybody was involved, parks. I'm going to forget to mention somebody, so I'll just say all of our city employees who helped over the weekend because it was, everybody's sleeping this week. Everybody's in recovery, but it was an amazing weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Moving on to Director of Law, Mr. Kirby.
I have nothing to report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirby. City Auditor, Mr. Frigetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Frigetti. Do any council members have any comments at this time?
Mr. Lexadeev.
Mr. Seaver.
While we don't have a 40-year history, I would like to remind people, because I don't think we meet again prior to June 18th and June 17th, but as an offshoot of the HRC, a Troy IDEA committee was formed to do the Juneteenth and take over the Juneteenth celebration. On June the 17th, which I believe is the Friday, there'll be a virtual chat with Ruby Bridges, and that will be at AIPAC. You can get tickets through the arbogastpac.com website. They, I believe they're free. I don't think there's a charge, but I believe that they are free. Kathy, are they not free, Kathy?
There's no charge.
Oh, okay. Yeah. They are free. There's been a lot of committee work going into this presentation. There's been some great corporate sponsorship through Hobart to bring Ruby Bridges here. She led the desegregation of the New Orleans schools, I think, Louisiana schools. Anyway, there's a famous Norman Lockwell picture of her. If you Google Ruby Bridges, you'll see her. She's going to bring a fantastic presentation as to her life and the things that she did and her role as a civil rights champion. And then on June the 18th, the McCaig Race Park will once again open up for a cookout. We have pulled chicken coming and lots of sides and lots of desserts and hamburgers and hot dogs for the kids, and there'll be entertainment and events. If anybody was there last year, it'll be hopefully a little bit bigger, a little bit better, although last year was way beyond anyone's expectations. So the march will begin at 3:30 at the gazebo at the library. It will go from the gazebo to the McCaig Race Park. All of this is available online because I'm sure I have done a not very great job of explaining everything, but we do hope to see you there again June 18th. June 17th is Ruby Bridges. June 18th is the walk and the celebration, and all of that's available on the Facebook page, juneteenthtroy, I guess that's not com, just juneteenthtroy Facebook page. So hopefully, everyone can come.
Thank you, Mr. Seaver. Any other council members have any comments this evening? Seeing none, do any staff members have any comments this evening? Seeing none, we'll move up to audience participation. If you wish to address council on any topic, please come to the podium, give your name and address, and take as much time as you wish to consume.
Good evening. I'm Steve Hendrickson. I live at 975 Dickerson Drive. Want to give you some comments on some news that we've all been reading about, and maybe some of it may relate to what we do in Troy. Want to talk mostly about the police. We've got some really interesting examples of not to follow and other ones of how to follow. In Texas, I can't imagine how embarrassing that is, and that's an example for Troy and everybody else not to follow. I could not be less proud of law enforcement and what they did there. In a similar vein, we've seen two instances in the local newspapers about people in training, while cleaning their guns, the guns went off. I don't think that's a good example of police that we want to have in Troy. I don't think I could have got my concealed carry if my gun went off while I was cleaning it, let alone having a government-issued gun to go out and protect people. Better example is Dayton. Dayton's got lots of things wrong with it. Certainly, allowed the police a couple of years ago, 30 seconds after they started shooting, guy was dead. I was proud of them. Recently, we've had two policemen in Troy who've been suspended. I don't know all the details there, but right now, I'm not very proud of them, and I think all the police and everybody in Troy should be proud of the police we've got. The policemen should be proud of the people they're working with, and I don't know if they feel that pride or embarrassment. I can't put, I can't put that label on them. But we should be pretty tough about people that we have protecting. God knows they got a tough job. We should protect them. We should give them everything they need, and when they can't provide that kind of clarity in their thinking and judgment, I get a question whether they should be part of the team or not. And you can all decide for yourselves. I don't, like I said, I don't know the details, but I suspect I'm not the only one that knows the details. But anyway, I just wanted to give you some food for thought. Every department in Troy, we should be proud of. We should be proud of them, not embarrassed by them, okay? Let's keep those, those two extremes clear. Be proud of them or not be embarrassed by them, okay? Thank you very much for your time.
Well, thank you, Mr. Henderson. The only thing I would add is that, you know, the disciplinary measures that are taken for our police officers or any other civil employee is done, is done by the administration, which would be the mayor and the Director of Public Service and Safety and those individuals. Like you, we would hope that all of our employees would strive to treat our citizens and themselves with the highest degree of ethical integrity. Do any other council members have any comments or questions? Seeing none, any other residents wish to come forward? Please come forward, give your name and address, and take as much time as you wish to consume.
Well, my name is Kathleen Lawrence, 478 Robin Hood Lane in Troy. I'm here representing the MLK planning team, which is under the umbrella of IDEA, and I'm going to be talking about the same thing. Everything begins with a conversation. As human beings, we all have our unique way of looking at things, and while opinions can be miles apart, there is one thing we all should agree upon, and that is the lives of our children are precious and must be protected. And most of us would also agree that we, community leaders and ordinary citizens alike, are endowed with that responsibility. So the question is, how do we most effectively come together and work to turn back the current tide of violence and death in our communities and in our country? You are invited to join us in a roundtable conversation where together we explore practical means of change and begin the real work of creating the world we want for our children. Oh, I forgot to give you these, Sue. I'm sorry. We will be meeting at the Lincoln Center on Tuesday, June 21st at 6 o'clock PM. For your information, since the school shooting in Texas, there have been 33 more mass shootings. And I suppose we can just cross our fingers and hope it doesn't happen here, or we can do something about it. When the planning team was talking about this, we pretty much decided that there's very little, if anything, we can do nationally or even statewide, but as a community, there are different things that we can do if we come together as a community and talk about those things. So I hope you can come. I hope you will pass the word, and do you have any questions?
Are there any questions for Mrs. Lawrence?
Okay.
Thank you for the invitation.
Thank you.
I see Mrs. Roeder in the back, and I'm sure she has some wonderful news that she would like to share with us. Please give your name and address and take as much time as you wish to consume.
Kathy Roeder, 1164 West Main Street. I am here tonight as the Executive Director for the Troy Area Chamber of Commerce and serving as the staff liaison to the Strawberry Festival Board of Directors. I'm here tonight, very tired, but I felt it was really important. I think it's important to thank people in the moment and when things happen, and we had a fabulous weekend in Troy, Ohio. I've been saying it was crazy good. More people than we have seen in a long time in the downtown, and it was just fabulous, and it's really important for us to come and thank the mayor and city council for the continued partnership that we have, but especially to thank the city staff. As the mayor said, staff were doing all kinds of things behind the scenes, and I also will not go through and acknowledge each department. I'm just going to say all the city staff that put things together ahead of time, and